Good morning Birmingham. I want to welcome everyone here to the May nineteenth, a regular scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council at nine thirty. Hold on one second. We're gonna have our invocation by Reverend Elijah Smith and the pledge of allegiance by Council President Pro Tem Wardine Alexander. And, okay, alright. Good morning everyone, could please stand.
Good morning everyone.
Morning.
Good morning ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you for the opportunity. Let us pray now. Gracious God, our Father, we thank you. Thank you for another day. Thank you for an opportunity and a purpose that was so appropriate for today. We pray now for each and every council member. We pray even for our mayor. We pray, God, that you give them the strategic ability to overcome every challenge that they would face. We pray that your grace would abound, that your peace would be with them now and forevermore. We believe and we receive your grace and your spirit. We thank you now, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's move the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. How you doing, sir?
Great, how are you?
Good, fine. Can we do roll call, please?
Council Pro Tem Alexander.
Good morning, here.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember O'Quinn. Morning. Councilmember Smithman. Morning. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Abbott. President Parker.
Good morning, good morning. The minutes are not ready for May twenty first through May twelfth, twenty twenty. Mr. Clerk, are you there?
Nomination, no nominations for boards and agencies.
Okay, alright. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to the council. Just one note, and it deals with our budget development. The current economic crisis created by the coronavirus pandemic is causing near catastrophic financial losses to cities, counties, and state governments throughout the United States. The uncertainty surrounding the current financial impact, along with quantifying possibilities of second and third waves on future financial resources, makes it extremely difficult to forecast operations with any degree of accuracy. It is therefore the position of the Finance Department that the normal process of budget development be postponed until we have better data for estimating both the short-term and midterm operational impact of the pandemic. Currently, our estimates project anywhere from a seventy-five million to one hundred and ten million impact to the twenty twenty-one budget. Adjustments to an operational budget of our size to offset this amount of deficit would require major reductions and austerity measures to our current cost structures. As such, we need to be strategic, intentional, and fiscally responsible as we develop the twenty twenty-one budget. As a result of the current economic situation, the Finance Department recommends delaying the budget process for three months until September thirtieth, twenty twenty. We are hopeful that this will provide more time to receive data to better understand and assess the impact of the pandemic to the city's tax revenue base. More importantly, this will also give us an opportunity to better assess any issues with reopening of businesses, which in turn could create a deeper chasm between revenues and operations. The plan would be to present the budget to City Council on August twentieth, twenty twenty, with the twenty twenty-one budget becoming effective October one of twenty twenty. In the interim, from July one of twenty twenty to September thirtieth of twenty twenty, the city would roll forward with the twenty twenty budget with certain cost modifications focused on a three-month projected loss for the period from July one of twenty twenty to September thirtieth of twenty twenty. That said, cost modifications are still being identified, again, they're still being identified, evaluated and quantified, and would be presented prior to the current fiscal year end of June thirtieth of twenty twenty. It is our opinion that this approach is the most fiscally responsible to all those whom the city serves, its citizens, businesses, and our employees. Mr. President and Council, that concludes the mayor's report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we probably have a few questions, so, who wants to start first? Council Smith, we'll just work our way around. You're okay? Any questions right now, or... Okay, alright, Council Williams, any questions for the mayor?
Yeah, this is for the, probably for the office of the city attorney. Around what the mayor just spoke to, I wanted to know if the council actually has to approve changing the budget year.
This is not changing the budget year.
Or changing when we receive the budget, which is explicit from what I remember I read.
Mr. President.
I think this is a one-time adjustment. I don't think this is part of that law that was passed where we would move to October one. I think we're still under the July one, June thirtieth, but just with the caveat of this year, we won't pass a operating budget until October. But I think we're still, I don't think this is going to be a move to permanently go October one. I think this is just a one-time, if, if, that's my interpretation, but if...
Not talking about permanent. Was asking if the mayor has to present a budget by a certain date.
Okay.
And if he does, and does not, does the council have to vote, was my question.
Mr. President, before legal answers that question, I wanted to clarify a point you made to your colleague, Council Williams. The Mayor-Council Act specifies that May twentieth of each year, that the mayor's office and the mayor's administration is supposed to submit, submit to the council a proposed budget by May twentieth of each year. That's tomorrow, that will not happen. And if that doesn't happen for said reasons, that the, you're supposed to get a notification, which I think was just shared, I think I shared this information when I just read to you all last week, and I've talked with several of you all by phone, including your president and Pro Tem. In addition to that, I think you know there are many examples in the past where the cities, the mayor and the council weren't in agreement, budgets weren't passed prior to July one. I think when all of us came in, that budget wasn't passed until, what if, what, December, maybe? So that budget was rolled from the prior year's budget from July one into December of that year. I think due to this financial crisis we're in, we're, we're taking the step to make sure when we do submit a budget, it is close as to projected numbers as they, accurate numbers as they need to be, and this is not going for only submitting a budget every year starting on October one. This is temporary, so, I know the question was submitted to the legal department, but Mr. President, I wanted to add to your question, I mean, add to your response.
Yeah, just to reiterate, not at all asking about a permanent change of budget year, just asking about this particular situation.
Okay.
So, this is pursuant to what the mayor's saying, that he has to submit that during that timeframe, and so I will research it to make sure if anything else needs to be added. That pretty much covered it.
Thank you.
Well, I was going down the line, Council, Council Abbott, and then we're just working our way.
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Council Hoyt.
Excuse me. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning to the council. I think initially, we had talked about waiting to the end of June. And, you know, I've been around a lot of budgets, and generally, even if we pass it in July, before July is over with, we've amended the budget. And so, the process of amending is not something new to this council, and so it seems to me that even with what is lying in the, you know, in the background with the COVID and all this other stuff, we still gonna end up amending the budget. We never had a budget that we hadn't had a hundred amendments. And so, to wait to August is, in my opinion, is in the up, when, when in actually, in June, we would know pretty much the actuals from this, this last quarter leading to the new budget year. And so, I think, you know, I mean, of course, the council does what it wants to do, but I just believe that nothing precludes us from amending the budget because we amend it all the time. That's why I always say mid-year is a joke, because by the time you get to mid-year, you done amended the budget a hundred times. And we're not challenging anybody to live within the budget. We're not. And that's been our problem, but I just want to give that, that thought.
Okay. Let's finish comments, and then we'll come back and we'll, we'll try to do a pathway for it. Dr. Quinn, and we'll work.
Thank you, President Parker. I don't have specific questions regarding that comment, but I do have questions on other issues for the mayor. So, I'm gonna digress for a second away from conversation about budget, just to bring a couple of issues to your attention. Back in April, we had some severe downpours that caused flooding on Morris Avenue and also at Forty-first Street and First Avenue South. So, I want to bring that to your attention, and I would appreciate it if I could be in contact with the Stormed Up Water Division of PEP to communicate to them the constituent concerns that have been shared with me, and hopefully get those issues addressed prior to entry into the summer, summer thunderstorm season, and we have additional flooding, disflooding, just, you know, to be clear, is causing property damage that's causing these property owners, you know, expenses. So, again, I'd appreciate it if I could communicate with the Stormwater Division of PEP to get those issues addressed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Quinn. I think that that's not only in your area, but I think throughout the city. So, I think perhaps what we might do is ask for a general report, not, I mean, specifically about yours, but throughout the whole city, on what's going on with the whole, with stormwater flooding in a lot of areas. So that'd probably be a request that we just ask for a larger conversation with the mayor, and so we could just talk through stormwater generally at the appropriate time. If that's, I mean, with you, Dr. Quinn. Okay. Councilor Hilliard?
No, sorry.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, alright. Council Woods, we were, do you have any initial questions or anything for the mayor? Okay. Alright, alright, let's go through the consent agenda. I started off with Council Smithman first.
Are you something else?
Did she ask a question? No, I started off with Council Smithman first.
Okay.
And then it worked around this one.
I looked at her, she looked like you had forgotten.
Oh, no, I started off with her first.
I didn't watch.
Yeah, I know, no, 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 I started off with her, she was first. Yes, ma'am. Okay, alright, well, cool, let's go through the consent agenda, and we've got two addendum items, so, Mr. Clerk?
Okay, good morning. The consent agenda starts on page three with item number six. On page four, we have item nine on consent. Page five, we have items ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen on consent. Page six, we have items fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen on consent. Page seven, we have items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four on consent. Page eight, we have items, sorry, give me one second here. Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight on consent. Page nine, we have items twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two on consent. Please note that on item number thirty-one, the T number should be T one ninety-one, strike T thirty, um, thirty-nine, three ninety, I'm sorry, it should be T one ninety-one and not T three ninety. That's on item thirty-one. Then on page ten, we have items thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven on consent. And page eleven, we have item number thirty-eight on consent. And you got two addendum items.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
I would like to add items seven and eight on page four to consent.
And a question about seven.
Okay, and also on the addendum, items forty and forty-one.
You know, we have to do the UC first of all, those, because they permit whatever.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Not paying attention.
Okay. Alright. Well, I was gonna, Council Hoyt, and then I'll just go down. Council Hoyt, how are you on the...
Yes, on seven, what, what agreement, what incentives are we considering here on the ship?
You want to just leave that item off?
Yeah, 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 we can do that.
Okay. Alright, we'll leave it off. Is that your only one, or you just...
Yeah, and... Oh, defer into incentives. Okay, okay, that's fine.
We can add it.
Yeah, we're good, we're good.
We can add it, okay, we can add seven back on, so seven and eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, well, what about eight? Who, who is, what is that, six, three-six catering?
You want to leave it off, or...
Yeah, leave it off.
So you want seven added to consent and eight to be off?
Right.
For discussion? Okay. Alright, is that everything, or that's...
Yeah, that's, I think that's fine.
Okay, alright, Dr. Quinn, we'll start.
Thank you, President Parker. There are no objections. I would like to add item two on page two to the consent agenda.
Okay. Alright, what about number one? I know I'm not, I'm just...
I was gonna add that one, I got to.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, alright, I was looking.
I have a question about that one.
Okay, Council Hilliard? You're good.
So you have a question about number one, Councilman? Okay.
That's something we can ask right now, you, we'll just bring it up, you want us to discuss it. Okay. Alright. Okay, that's fine. Alright, so leave one off. Good, okay. Council Woods? Council Williams? Okay. Alright. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read, all other matters will be announced by reading the item number only, all public hearings will be announced. So, have a motion.
Second.
Okay, voting should be open for the consent agenda. Council Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes.
Alright, that vote should be up.
Alright, the consent agenda passes.
First item, okay? Item one, an ordinance to further amend the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, by appropriating three hundred and forty-eight thousand, sixty-two dollars and ninety-two cents to non-departmental lodging tax expense. Funding source is the lodging tax revenue.
Thank you.
Move, Diana.
Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Quinn, you had some questions?
Yeah, so I just had a question about what the expense was. You know, we're collecting lodging tax, and lodging tax expense doesn't tell me, you know, what this money is doing, so if there could be some explanation of what this lodging tax is going towards...
Mr. President, chair, this is the mayor's office. This amount is to pay the quarterly payment for the visitors bureau. So we amended the budget because we under-budgeted that line item for that payment to the visitors' bureau, so that reflects the quarterly payment that's due to them out of the lodging tax.
And that is a contractual relationship?
I think this is, I think it's a state statute that a portion of that goes to the visitors' bureau and to the BJCC.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President, I just wanted to follow up that, that group met yesterday, and in looking at some of the information that was shared, of course, COVID-19 has affected, I guess I take, COVID-19 has affected sales tax and receipts when it comes to lodging, and the Convention Bureau is doing a great job in trying to manage that through rescheduling or trying to move events to certain other times to try to recoup those losses. Thank you.
Okay. And also, since we mentioned Convention Visbrough, get him a shout-out as well for partnering with the city and all, and with everyone else on the World Games twenty twenty-five, World Police and Fire Games, so, anyway, just want to get him a quick shout-out.
And I must say, they were very complimentary to the city, as well as to the city council, for the collaboration and the efforts that were made to bring those games to Birmingham in twenty twenty-five. So thank you, and Mr. Mayor as well.
Yeah, to the mayor and all the other partners, civics, and everyone else, and I think it's gonna be a great event in twenty twenty-five, so, anyway. Dr. Quinn, is that addressed?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, alright, any other questions from anybody? Everybody's good? Okay. Mr. Clerk, ready to vote?
Alright, Council Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
My President Parker?
Uh, yes. Okay, the, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
We should be going to item three. An ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in amount of ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-six cents to execute a quick claim deed to the Birmingham Airport Authority for the sale of property legally described as block zero lot zero MB ten, page thirty-five, meets and bounds, POB two oh three feet north of southwest corner, northwest quarter of section two, T one seventeen, south range two west, thence north seventy-one feet long, west lines, sector two, thence east three thirty-six feet, thence south seventy-one feet, thence west three thirty-six feet. Two POB as recorded in the map of the Judge of Probate, Jefferson County, Alabama PID twenty-three, zero-two-two-twelve-nine, and located at ninety-seventeen, seven, Seven Avenue North, Birmingham, which was required by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement lead and according to section three dash one dash four C of the General Code of the City of Birmingham. And I need UC to pass today.
I move for unanimous consent.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion on the item, please.
I move the item.
Second.
And it is before you.
Okay, any questions, anybody? Yes, sir.
Yes, I have a, just a general inquiry. This is in a area where the neighborhood that was there previously has been vacated. There are no homes in this area. There are streets, though, that are open to, to traffic, and at the appropriate time, I think it would be useful for the council to know what the airport authority's long-term plans are for that area. Having those streets open and this area vacated creates, you know, opportunity for dumping in particular. We've also had some more serious incidents that have involved activity in that area. So, if, if the airport authority is going to, you know, have possession of this property and, and there's some long-term plan, I think it's appropriate for the city to know, you know, to what extent we need to, to vacate the streets and allow the area to be secured and restricted from public traffic.
Let, let me, Councilor Quinn, the neighborhood officers or leaders, they meet with the airport on a regular basis, but what we will do, we'll ask the airport authority to just come and give us an overview. They have a new director, and so we'll, just like we are doing with other agencies, we just have them to come and we'll have a meet and greet and, and just talk through a lot of stuff. But the neighborhood and those areas, meet with them on a periodic basis to discuss, and so that's some of the issues that have been raised already, but we'll follow up, but we'll invite the airport authority leadership over and have a, you know, a introduction, their new CEO, and just talk about some of their plans, not only for, around the area, but also what, how has COVID-19 affected the airport, and how does that move forward as one of our partners? So, we'll work on that and get that set up as well.
Thank you, President.
Okay, alright, who?
I had.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna say, Dr. Quinn, I, I really don't know how that can be achieved with, with it being a main artery into Tarrant, so, I mean, if you cut off the road, then the people got to...
Sorry, I'm, I'm not talking about cutting off the road. These, this is formerly residential streets, these are not through streets that I'm referring to.
Okay.
Yeah, because that, I mean, it's, it's vague, and most of that property is owned by the airport itself, and of course, I don't know if this is noise mitigation, because generally, when the airport buys property, it's occupied, because they can't buy unoccupied property for noise mitigation, so, be interesting to see, you know, what's happening here.
But just like, yeah, we will ask them to come and have conversations, and they'll work with you through your Transportation Committee as well, Council Hoyt, to, as relates to having the airport authority here. Is that...
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm already gonna invite them anyway.
Okay, alright, but then, yeah, if you'll let us know when you, if you let us all know and put a little emphasis on it, then we can all just use that as an opportunity, if you're already inviting them, we can just, we can...
And, and they do have a strategic plan, I think, knowing him here, forget the company he worked for.
Okay, alright.
What's the company he worked for?
I'm not for sure, but...
Been so long, but anyway, they do have a plan.
But if you, when you have that, I think we could probably just embrace, and just, if you already have extended invitation, we'll work through your committee, and we'll work together on that. Okay, ready to vote on this item? Everybody good? Mr. Clerk?
Council Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard? Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes.
Okay, that item passes. Next item.
It should be item four. An ordinance to authorize the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of one thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents to execute a quick claim deed to the Birmingham Airport Authority for the sale of property legally described as block seven, lot twenty-two, MB twenty-five, page ninety-three, meets and bounds, lot twenty-two, block seven. Airport Gardens, Airport Gardens as recorded in the Office of the Judge of Probate, Jefferson County, Alabama PID, twenty-three, zero-three-three-ten-fifteen, and located at six... sixteen, sixteen, eighty-eight Street North, Birmingham, which was required by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens and according to its section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. Motion for you see, please. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, uh, motion on the item.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, the item is before you.
Okay, any questions? I think we're ready to vote on this one. Mr. Clark?
All right, uh, Councilmember Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilly.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
President Parker.
Yes. Okay, that item passes. Next item, sir.
All right, next five. Um, an ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and ten cents to execute a quick claim deed with Trinity AME Zion Church for the sale of property legally described as block one, lot forty-one, MB six, page eighty-two, meets and bounds, lots forty-one through forty-three, block one Enslie Realty Companies, add to Enslie, uh, six eighty-two, as recorded in the Office of the Judge of Probate Jefferson County, Alabama, partial ID twenty-two, thirty-one, four, thirty-three, twenty-three, and located at seventeen, twenty-eight, nineteenth Street, Birmingham, which was required by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens and according to its section three dash one dash four C of the general code. I need you see to pass today.
I move unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion on the item, please.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, item is before you.
All right, any questions, anything? I think we're ready.
Yes.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, so, um, where is this property in, in relation to, uh, Trinity? Yeah, 'cause I know there was a house that caught a fire and I think I reported it, uh, to administration, but I hadn't gone back to see if it's been torn down. Council Hilly, I think you're familiar with it, not far from, uh, Kentucky Fried Chicken, right there by the Catalina to the Erskine Hawkins Park, yeah, I think it's.
The White House?
Yeah, this is, I think, um, Chuck Fosch is the pastor there. And, um, so I was just trying to see, is this a property away from it or? And I didn't know that the church had caught a fire as a result of that house catching a fire. And so, uh, but we want to try to do whatever we can do to help, you know, 'cause I, I don't think they plan on leaving. I think they want to stay in that community. So, um, and maybe this is for new development, I don't know. Okay, where is the church? Oh, it's away from the church. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, uh, you're good, okay? All right. All right, any other questions, ready to vote, Mr. Clark?
Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilly.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
President Parker.
Yes.
That vote should be.
All right, that item passes. Next item.
Should be item eight. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a catering management and food services agreement with C six three thirty-six Catering and Events LLC under which the city will retain six thirty-six Catering and Events LLC to provide catering and food and beverage services at Battle Auditorium for a term of one year, which may be extended for up to two additional terms of one year each. And six thirty-six Catering and Events LLC will pay the city commissions equal to twenty percent from food and beverage services sales, twelve point five percent from catering sales, and twenty percent from alcoholic beverage sales, and will provide an annual allowance of six thousand dollars for city events at Battle. Motion, please.
Move on.
All right, Council Hoyt?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm fine and, um, if the percentage is, is commensurate with, um, with other, uh, concessionaires, I think it's fine. And now we haven't defined on what events that they were sponsored with six thousand dollars, so I think you may want to clarify that. And is that, um, from the administration or from the council or just how is that working out, would work out?
It will provide an annual, um, Mr. Mayor, uh, Council, it says, how do we determine? City events by?
When you say city, are you saying council too? I just want.
By council or just mayor's office? Just the mayor's office.
Okay.
So.
We just clarified, Councilor Hoyt, it's city events, it's, it's mayor, council, it's city, it's any department, council, mayor's office, any of us.
Okay, and we'll, I think we probably, um, treat it like what?
What?
I ain't getting into that.
I couldn't understand.
I don't either. All right, so, um, I think it's been clarified and, and hopefully we'll ask our administrator and deputy to work along with the mayor's office as relates to the events and how we get to that. How we have access to that if, um, I guess that's, I guess the mayor's moved out, but anyway, we will just take the interpretation if, no, we're just saying the administrator and deputy to work along with, with your office on events and all that kind of stuff. Yes, sir, okay. All right, okay. That's the clarification with the, uh, thumbs up from the mayor. Are we, uh, good now?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we're ready to vote then.
All right, Council Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilly.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
President Parker.
Yes.
All right, that item passes.
All right, next should be just, uh, receiving the emergency purchase notice, item thirty-nine, on the purchasing agent relative to the repair of H VAC units at the New Georgia landfill. And after that are addendum items. Item forty, an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty dash forty-eight as been amended by ordinance number twenty dash fifty, ordinance number twenty dash seventy-one, and ordinance number twenty dash seventy-five to modify the shelter in place order and public safety curfew for the city of Birmingham during the COVID-19 public health emergency to mute, to remove the curfew, uh, but requiring continued compliance with the order of the state health officer. I need you see to pass today.
I move unanimous consent.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, or motion on the item, please?
Move the item, second.
And my item is before you.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
What, what are we actually accomplishing here? 'Cause I thought that we removed, uh, um, the curfew last week.
But they extended the time. You know, before it was the twenty-second and now they send it to the twenty-ninth. So then you would have to revisit. Those changes are far from our thing, I don't know.
So what are we accomplishing with this?
As shared with each of you, um, yesterday by email and by text, um, the extension from the twenty-second to the twenty-ninth versus you all coming back Thursday or Friday to a special call meeting. In addition to that, I thought it was to be made clear, um, to the public and to the ten of us collectively that we're not making decisions in isolation as elected officials, that we're making decisions in conjunction with our local health officials. You also, also received some correspondence in a separate email yesterday, uh, that I shared with you, that I shared in that text as well, from our local health experts about where we are with facial covers and the need to extend them. Um, in addition to that, as you know, the information we're all receiving on a daily basis, this information continues to come in every day where cases are continuing to increase, um, as well as there's still a possibility for community spread. And so, uh, this was set to expire to twenty-second. We're taking a very slow approach, uh, while we're receiving that information and being offered to you, but no, no changes but, but, but for, um, the seven-day extension by the twenty-ninth. Nothing else.
Mr. President.
So.
I was gonna let, let.
Hold on.
No, go ahead. I just want to get your attention.
This, to my knowledge, when I read this, this doesn't have anything to do with the face covers, right?
The curfew has been.
Lifted.
Off the table. You all also approved this alone with the facial cover last week. If, um, by reading it, you saw that everything else was in compliance with the governor's orders. So it, it's in line with everything we've done from day one. It's also been extended to the twenty-ninth.
I guess I'm not asking my question.
Okay, why don't we go to Councilor Hoyt and we'll come back to you? How about that? You okay with that, Councilor?
Yeah, I'm just asking what it's actually accomplishing for the city. It's all I was trying to ask.
I understand. We're gonna go to Councilor Hoyt and we'll come back to you, Council Williams. Council Hoyt?
Yeah, well, and, and I don't, I don't necessarily speak for the mayor, um, but I think any measures we put in place is gonna save lives. You know, and, you know, I don't think we can always appease everyone in the city. And I'm gonna share an email with you all, 'cause we all got this email from Mr. Fowles and I responded to him, um, because I thought we, we needed to do that and he talked about what, what is punitive. And, and, and my response was, um, is loss of life more punitive than whether or not we raise the awareness? 'Cause I didn't, you know, the mayor had said he didn't think he was gonna arrest anybody. It's just to raise the awareness and the seriousness of people wearing the mask. And, um, and so any iteration where we trying to prevent, uh, things spreading and, and the, uh, the continuum of that, 'cause we may be here a long time, not just to two-hundred, May twenty-ninth, uh, there may be an opportunity to extend that even further, but just really trying to raise awareness, because there's still folks who are very cavalier about not wearing the mask. And I'll, um, I'll share it with you all, but, but what I want to, uh, ask, uh, Mr. President, with respect to the, the COVID-19, uh, we were getting that, that real life di- data, uh, and we really want to see the numbers, uh, because the numbers really hadn't gone down, uh, in Jefferson County. And, and I really want to see an all-out campaign, you know? One of the reason why A's read it is because there were no beer boards. You know, you said, you, you see beer boards that drink more milk, but you weren't seeing none saying abstain and all this other stuff, uh, with respect to that. And so I just believe that, um, and I've said this to the president privately, but we need to establish a budget for COVID-19. You know, we really do, because if we don't go, um, all out raising awareness, doing beer boards, whatever we need to do to raise this, then we're gonna lose out. And we know disproportionately. Don't mean nobody else is not contracting, was it, but disproportionately, even President Obama last night, and it's be talked about, um, you know, imagine that, he doesn't speak unless he knows. I got that pretty much about him. And, um, but it is an issue that we all need to be concerned with. And I just look, you know, while we looking and we holding a budget, then I think that's an opportunity for us to start working on a COVID-19 budget. Um, because if not, then we don't need to be scrapping in terms of how we gonna, uh, you know, continue to raise awareness. And there needs to be some things, because when you look at, um, um, our population, you know, we got more folk per, per capita than anywhere else in the state of Alabama in a concentrated area. And so, uh, and I'm glad to see us testing at Legion Field, but the thing about it is, it's, it's a muted issue if you're not advertising every day to tell folk to go by there. You understand what I'm saying? So that's what we got to do. That's our job, that's our task. It's a ways, raise this awareness. We got the radio stations around here, we got, um, you know, the television station, what have you. There needs to be an all-out campaign of trying to get folks to come in compliance, uh, with the law. Okay? And I think that's really, uh, the whole purpose of this, is to, to help with that. But we re, but we, the council and the mayor needs to decide on a budget for COVID-19 specifically to address this issue.
All right. I, I want to respond to that, 'cause I think we're working on that, but we need to, we'll, we'll, let's talk about that after, let's get through the item and then we'll come back and we'll talk about what the plans are. We're gonna discuss it at a committee meeting to get everybody on, before we talk about, but let's get this item disposed of and then we'll finish. I know Counselor Smith have mentioned something, so we're starting to get some supplies in now. And, uh, we can talk through that if we're ready, I mean, from mask to hand sanitizer, we're starting to get stuff away. That's also gonna help as we deal with, uh, COVID-19 and what's the whole layout of the, of the strategy. So if we could just get through this item, this Council Hoyt, and we'll come back and we'll finish if that's. Okay, all right. Did you want to speak, Mr. Mayor, 'cause I know I was gonna go back to Council Williams?
It's to Council Williams' point.
Okay, yes, sir.
You all in your packet on the addendum, page three. Um, this is part of forty-eight, and so you know that the shelter in place ordinance we did was, was rooted in our local state of emergency. In section A, we did away with the curfew, however, we kept everything else. And so, um, the businesses within the city of Birmingham, asking them to comply with the state health, health officer's order. Although people can still gather, uh, there's no number on gathering, that they still have to be six feet apart, so that's part of our local ordinance, making sure we can enforce that if we see something that's out of compliance with that. And in addition to that, as you see with D E F G H and I, these things are all related to our local concerns, including, um, number H, which is very important.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, Mr. Williams, did that address your question?
Yeah, I guess, let, let me rephrase my question. I think it's more of a legal question and it's not about one side or the other, whether we should, shouldn't. My question is, is this, can the city not already enforce the governor's order? I guess would be a, a different way of asking my question.
Can you direct that to the city attorney or the mayor?
This was designed and is in effect in accordance to the state health officer's order. So it's already in line with what has been in place. And so we're just asking for an extension. So there's really not a legal question, it's just an option for the council on if you want to vote to extend to the twenty-ninth. That's really the issue.
So can the city enforce the state health officer's order? Okay.
Unless the state legislature change what they're able to do.
What that particular officer is able to do.
But I think Counselor Hunter, I mean, I'm sorry, Counsel Williams, Counsel Williams, it's very important to note this, man, I've, I've, I'm, I'm trying to say this in the plainest way I can and, um, see if I can get you to understand what I'm saying. Everything we've done hasn't had anything to do with the other hundred and sixty-eight cities in the state of Alabama, nor what the state is doing. City of Birmingham is under state of emergency. And so the temporary ordinances we put in place are to guard against the COVID-19 in our community, which, uh, we believe the measures we've taken, um, have had, um, an overall positive effect of making sure there's not widespread. an overall positive effect of making sure there's not widespread, community spread within our community, knowing that we have more of a vulnerable population in a lot of places within the state of Alabama. So even if the state had their own order, uh, remember, the orders we put in place were before the state put theirs in place. And even if the state loosened some things that, um, with, with Mobile County and Jefferson County, they're look different anyway. And locally, for our city, we needed to make sure our ordinances work for our residents within our city, because what the state may do may look very different from what the city of Birmingham does, what the other hundred and sixty eight cities in Alabama do, may need to look totally different than what we do. So it's not a matter of, can, so answer your question? Do we have the authority to enforce the state's order? Yes. Does that mean we should not have our local order? No, we should have our own local order.
But the, but the local order just regurgitates what the state order already is?
Maybe, maybe not. I don't see anything in the state's order that deals with H on page four, um, or G. And if, um, if you want me to go through each one of them, I can. I don't think it's, um, there are some things that are similar, yes, but that's by design. But there's some things that are related to our city as well.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Mr. President, while you're out, I think we had one other council that wanted to speak.
Okay, and I think Counsel Abbott as well, so, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first of all, I wanna say to my colleague, uh, uh, Stephen Houghton, that he was, uh, he was right on top of the issue. I agree concurrently with what he's saying. Any opportunity we get, uh, to, uh, talk about safety for our community, we should take that. Uh, we should definitely have, uh, a COVID nineteen. I think that was a beautiful thought that you came up with, and I, I, and I think our president is looking into that. But I agree that, uh, we need as much publicity as possible to warn our community, uh, of, of the danger that they are in. Every day that I take time and move around my district and throughout the city of Birmingham, I see that, um, that people are beginning to get relaxed. I passed, I rode my bike past a, a particular bar and grill. Uh, it was an African American establishment, and there were some who had on masks, there was others who didn't. Uh, they weren't six feet apart. And it was almost astonishing, because I realized people are getting anxious, they wanna get out. They're tired of being, uh, I would say cooped up or, 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 or staying at home. I recognize that this is a very difficult time. Uh, I bought a bike to kinda ease mind a little bit, but I, I, I say to you that I know everybody may not be able to do that, but, uh, we just can't relax the rules to get out. It's a state of emergency. We're different than a whole lot of other places. We're a large city, uh, we're a majority black city. We're at risk. Uh, my district alone, I would think I, I have quite a few elderly people, uh, Councilman Houghton, I'm sure you do too, and, and, and quite a few you. We got a lot of elderly people in our community. And we need to be educating our community at every step. Uh, to our religious community, I think they're doing a great job, you know? And I've, I've listened to them talk, and that's beautiful. They're concerned, they're not rushing to open the doors, and they shouldn't be rushing to open the doors. If you noticed, on a national level, have you noticed several of those countries that relaxed their rules are now back into a state of emergency? Have you seen that? In China? Several, even I, I was listening today, in Iran. In Iran, i- it's a national, and most of their leaders are older. You know, and, uh, I, I relish, I'm right on the cuff. I'm right on the cuff. I think you are too, Brother Houghton, you right on the cuff too. We're right there together.
Indubitably.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. We right on the edge. And a lot of you in this room and throughout this building and that can hear my voice, your parents, your neighbors, your church members, your friends. And I would rather think in some of my other colleagues' districts, that may not be a majority African American, have a great deal of seniors that they look after in their communities. So what I say to you is that there is no time to relax. Birmingham should sound the alarm at every front. Every time we get an opportunity to get a microphone or to talk, Madam Pro Tem, every opportunity, we should be talking, all of our fraternities, sororities, all of them should be talking about this issue. We're in the process, and we're in an opportunity where we can save lives. And I'm gonna do everything I can to do that, and I know that you are too. And I ask that every time we get the opportunity, we check ourselves and continue to push safety in our community. And it doesn't matter whether the state or the health department, we shouldn't need anybody to tell us that we need to save lives. We should take the authority that we have and the power that we have. And one thing, you can't legislate, you can't legislate, you can't legislate morality. You can't pass laws to legislate morality. We, we, you know, we've been given a platform for a reason, and I for one are gonna use it, uh, to the mayor. I appreciate him standing strong and looking out for the constituents that he have. And to all of my colleagues, you all are very strong people. I, I just, every chance, every opportunity I get to sit among you, I'm, I'm still marveling over the, the brilliantness among my colleagues and, and the mayor, and, and just the people in this building, the hard hours that we put in to protect our people. I know all of you care. You all care about life. To our communications, to our, our media, you do an excellent job of helping us get the word out, and we really appreciate that. And I think we don't tell you that a lot. But I appreciate the media and everything they have done to help us get the word out. And we're stronger together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, you know, I've been trying to be very careful, and I feel bad that I'm talking without my mask on, because Dr. Fauci, Dr. Fauci has told us that speech droplets stay in the air for eight to fourteen minutes after you talk. Eight to fourteen minutes. And if you sneeze, I mean, everybody in the room is toast. So that didn't matter so much when we might just catch a cold, even though I don't like colds. But with this, that makes a whole, is its whole new world. And he also said that up to twenty five percent of people may not, may have coronavirus and not have any symptoms. So that means those people that you're talking with at the bar without your mask on may be spewing this stuff all over everywhere. They're not sick, but you might be. Now, I'm sensitive about it, because I go home to my ninety seven year old mother, and I know what happens to people who are ninety seven years old if they get coronavirus. That thought is enough to make me behave myself even more carefully. But I deeply resent the people who have the attitude of, I'm gonna do whatever I want, and I don't care about you. That just absolute, just absolutely drives me crazy. Because we all have freedom, but I don't have the freedom to run a stop sign. I don't have the freedom to kill you. And yet with this coronavirus thing, we are seeing people who say it's my right, basically, to do as I please, and if you die because of it, so be it. And I, I resent that attitude. We're all free, but we are also our brother's keeper. And now I'm gonna put my mask back on.
Okay. Counsel Houghton, and I, I know, well, hold on, Counsel Houghton, Counsel Smith, she has not spoken, I'm sorry.
Yes, indeed.
Counsel Smith, please forgive me, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then we'll come back to Counsel Houghton, yes, ma'am.
Um, I do want to say I don't want my other counselors' voice to get, you know, silenced out. You know, Counsel Houghton, thank you for mentioning that. But I think every week, one of us is asked for some type of PSA about COVID. From Counsel Williams with the mask, Counsel Hillary is saying this all the time. I know myself is asked that. Um, I really, really think we need to get on the ball for this. Um, people need to know, we need more data. I think we need to put it out on our social media platforms. Hey, this is the data for today. Or even have a comparison, so people can actually see, because some people are visual learners. Y'all, the numbers aren't, aren't, you know, decreasing, they're increasing. And I, also, the city data, hopefully we can get some type of update on that, Counsel President Parker. I really think that would improve a lot. Um, I really have to commend Mayor Whitman, because he said in his speech, you know, it's not about you, it's about your neighbors, it's about your grandmother. Like, um, I know a lot of us just travel overseas, and the perception about Americans is that we are very selfish. Like, that is a thing they say, y'all are very selfish. And I think this is a time where we need to show the world that we are not selfish. Americans, uh, Alabamians, we are, you know, unselfish, that we care about the people next to us. Um, I think we just really need to drive it home about this COVID. Like, COVID is scary, but it's still here. But I just, you know, and we have face masks for our employees, and we are wearing face masks for the public and hand sanitizer. I want the public to know that, like, we're not leaving you all alone. Like, we're here for you, everything we do is for you all. Like, we, like Counsel Hillary was saying, we spent hours talking on the phone about this. So, you know, this isn't malicious, we're just trying to protect you all. And we hear everybody's voices about the pros and the cons of every decision we made. But, you know, Counsel Houghton is right, you know, and, uh, Counsel Abbott told me this, you know, death is death. Like, you know, a loss, you can't put a price on a life. And so I want you all to know that, you know, we are listening, but Counsel President Parker, I'm urging, we need a plan of action. You know, I'm not just gonna put this on the mayor, I think we just be needed. Like, I don't care if I have to stay after hours, like, we need to put something out all the time. You know, we need to educate people on how to wear their mask as well.
Right. Well, yeah, well, and, and the thing about it is, um, people look for us for information.
Yes.
And if we're not putting information out on a collective, um, um, level, then we're, we're really not serving our people, you know? And it needs to be all of us. I think the unity of the council will, and the mayor, will be what people need to see. And it needs to be constant. You just can't, you know, you can't say we testing here, and then you only, and, and then you test three days ahead of time. That's not enough time to get information out for people to change their schedule to go by and get tested. So that has to change. You know, we oughta, at, at this point, we oughta be able to say that for the next two months, this is what we're gonna be doing, this is where we're gonna be. And we be, need to, need to advertise as such, because we want more people, because now that it's opened up to a systematic. And that's really been my cry from the very beginning. And when I've had participated in some of these, uh, conversations, and I think Counsel Hillary, you on one, where, you know what I'm saying, you, you have to do the a systematic vote, because these are people who, you know, don't present like somebody else who had COVID. You know, because you on medication and stuff, and, you know, and you, you, you think it's suppressed, but you could be a carrier of this disease. That's really what it means. And so, uh, and there are more people out there that don't have the symptoms, or their symptoms a minimum, and really are exposing other people. We don't want that, okay? I was just reading here, China is going back to home, uh, stay at home, because there's another second outbreak of COVID nineteen. And said a hundred and eight million people now are back in lockdown.
Wow.
So this thing ain't going away, y'all. But we'll be derelict if we don't do something on an advertising level and drive this home. You know, we got buses, it could be put on the bus, it could be whatever, we got to do that, y'all. And if we're not, then you can't blame anybody but us at the end of the day, okay? And it needs to be an all out. And we need to come up with a, um, a plan, a media plan, for all the counselors to get engaged and raising awareness, and so that we, uh, have a constant, um, uh, presence before the people. And it don't necessarily have to be the counselors, you could designate, we need to get folk, ordinary folk. You know, put, get them in their uniforms, saying, y'all, I need you all to be, uh, careful, because I don't want the disease, because I'm a frontliner. You understand what I'm saying? That's the kind of message that we got to send to folk. Because I'm just telling you, young people think they're oblivious. But now we know children. And that's why I don't understand why we don't have, uh, getting these masks out. Well, if they, if they can't work for the first responders, they can work for our, our residents. You know? I mean, that's a lot.
And also the antibody tests at UAB is another vital thing that I think people need to know about. Because I know Atlanta, that shows you if you've had COVID already, or if you can get it again. So I think there's a really big educational piece we need for a lot of people.
All right, here's where we are. And we just, I think either tomorrow or by Thursday, let's find an hour, hour and a half, we will roll out, um, different options that we wanna proceed on as a council. Uh, both having a more comprehensive testing locations, where it's kinda planned out over the next month, and we educate that, that's one piece. And all the other points that you all have talked about, billboards, uh, we've got, we did pass something a couple of weeks ago regarding, uh, billboards piece. So we just need to, um, get the final touches on that. TV, radio, uh, I think there are things that are being put in place, but let's kinda fine tune them, uh, between now and Thursday, and then we can be ready to hit the ground running, where it's in all of our, in all ninety nine neighborhoods. So, um, we will, um, we'll, we'll plan a, uh, we'll just do a special committee to hold just specifically on, on, on outreach, community engagement, uh, as relates to COVID nineteen. So, uh, between now and, uh, either Wednesday, tomorrow or Thursday, uh, we'll just check everybody's schedule, and then we'll have that conversation and get a plan of action, uh, where all of us agree with. So, uh, that's from masks, hand sanitizer, to testing sites, to, um, you know, billboards, TV, radio, you know, flyers, old school way, new school way of doing it, a comprehensive plan that we all will embrace as a council, and how do we move it forward? So, um, I think we'll be fine. Also, around the funding that's in place in Montgomery, and I had some notes, so I was gonna talk about it later. But the funding that, uh, the legislature, the governor passed, one point eight billion that's, uh, passed, that has to be allocated or, or encumbered by December of twenty twenty. And also funding, uh, the county has, they have a hundred and fifteen million dollars of funding. So we need to discuss strategies around that, also workforce development on, on, uh, you know, how do we, uh, get people back to work involved with a lot of different aspects as relates to this COVID nineteen? So, um, let's, uh, look tomorrow or Thursday, have a meeting, discuss COVID nineteen, uh, comprehensive strategy. And, um, so, and also, um, on the hand sanitizers, uh, we do have some now, little two and a half ounces, uh, from Dredge River. So if there are some things, so we just need to supply up what we have, and just, as we get them, let's disperse them as a group, uh, you know, so we can make sure, it's a constant flow, whether it's masks, hand sanitizers, all the different aspects, to make sure everyone, uh, is safe from our parts. So we will be ramping it up, uh, later today.
And Mr. President, I don't want the census to get lost as well. You know, it's been extended till the end of October. And also, um, I want the public to know that cities get up to two hundred and fifty million from the state. And also, you know, like Counsel President Parker was saying, I think we need to partner with the county on some things as well, to make sure we get some cooperation with them.
Yeah, and, um, we'll, and, and, you know, we've been talking all along, Counsel Smith, and, and all of us have, really dealing with the COVID nineteen, but knowing that the census is out there, and it's gonna impact us on the back end. Because if the numbers aren't right, the federal funding is gonna be cut. So we're gonna be fighting two wars simultaneously, and we're gonna fight them, and we're gonna win both of them. And so we've got, even in the conversation of, um, you know, COVID nineteen, but also, um, how do we deal with the census? And so, um, so two, two wars that we have to fight same time, but we'll be fine. We're gonna be victorious in both of them. So it's just gonna take all of us working together. And now that we've gotten a little breathing room now, uh, we can now talk more specifically about, um, how do we, you know, have a strategic plan on both of them? So, um, we'll be on the lookout next day or two. And what else?
No, I just want to say thank you, because sometimes we can talk, you know, amongst each other and not tell the public.
Oh, yeah, but we're gonna roll it out.
I want them to know that, you know, we are working on certain things.
Absolutely, we're working nonstop. Um, and then also even on the testing sites, um, uh, and we'll, we'll invite the health department and, and Dr. Wilson, Dr. Hicks, to, um, you know, data, and then also testing locations. How do we partner with, you know, the, uh, you know, North Birmingham going on, uh, what's going on in West End, Woodlawn, all those different areas. But we've just got to have a comprehensive strategy. So depending on where the sites are, we give proper amount of notification. So I think that's being discussed, but we will, we're gonna work through all of that and, uh, come up with a comprehensive plan. And, um, make sure we coordinate, uh, with the mayor and, and his team as well. So anyway, it'll be all hands on deck, and I think, uh, you'll see that. And so we'll be, um, seeing if tomorrow works or Thursday works. But, uh, anyway, uh, anybody have any other questions on the item forty before we vote? Counsel Abbott?
Nope.
Okay, you're good. Everybody's good?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Mr. Clark? Ready to vote, sir?
Counsel Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counsel member Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel member Hoyt?
Yes.
Counsel member O'Quinn?
Aye.
Counsel member Smithman?
Aye.
Counsel member Williams?
Aye.
Counsel member Woods? He's out. Counsel member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Uh, yes, okay. Item forty passes, uh, the other forty-one?
Item forty-one. Addendum item, in ordinance to amend, ordinance number twenty-sixty-nine is amended by ordinance number twenty-seventy-two. In ordinance number twenty-seventy-six, requiring that face coverings or masks be worn in public in the city of Birmingham during the COVID-19 public health emergency and recovery. I need you to see it to pass today.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion on the item?
Second.
The item is before you?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a little tiny thing. There's a typo on page four in paragraph. Let's see, item number four. Last sentence, just, there's a word content, and it should be contact. It's a little thing, but we ought to make our ordinance right, if we can.
Which, can you?
Okay, however, employers are encouraged to structure work to promote social distancing and limit close contact, not content. I don't know what close content is. So I'm assuming it's close contact. It's the last sentence. It's page four, item four. Last sentence. Just the word content should be contact. That's all.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Any other? Counsel Williams?
Not to beat a dead horse, but I do hope that we can focus on the education portion of this and not, um, the extreme enforcement measures that are laid out in this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Uh, ready to vote, Mr. Clark?
Okay, Counsel member Alexander?
Aye.
Counsel, uh, Protem Alexander, Counsel member Hillier? Uh, absent. Counsel member Hoyt?
Yes.
Counsel member O'Quinn?
Aye.
Counsel member Smithman?
Aye.
Counsel member Williams?
No.
Counsel member Woods? Absent. Counsel member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Aye, all right.
That vote should be up.
Okay, that item passes. Um, said everything?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, Counsel Williams?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just wanted to congratulate all the seniors that are graduating from Birmingham Public Schools. And so we want to say kudos to you all. I know it's not the normal. Uh, but we certainly want to, um, say that we, uh, really appreciate, uh, them applying themselves. And, uh, and we pray that God has a great future, uh, for them. Thanks.
Oh, sorry, uh, Birmingham Education Foundation is doing a college chat series with, uh, Mayor Randall Whitman and Rachel Harmon, Director of the Birmingham Promise. So if there are any seniors are interested in hearing about that, there'd be a conversation today at six.
Anything else? Uh, anyway, um, have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Clark?
All right.
All right.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, all right, thank you.